Well, I'm gonna get going here. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Turlock, West Turlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Association Board of Directors meeting, April eighth, 2021. I called this meeting order at five o'clock PM. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 crisis and pursuant to executive order in 2920, this meeting is being held via conference call without a physical meeting location. This meeting was noticed in accordance with the Brown Act. In addition to a physical posting of the agenda at 333 East Canal Drive, the meeting was noticed on turlockgroundwater.org and emailed to the sub basin's ongoing interested parties list. This meeting is being digitally recorded and will be posted on the Turlock Groundwater YouTube channel and also posted on turlockgroundwater.org. The board secretary is taking minutes as well. Materials presented are available online at turlockgroundwater.org. We encourage public participation during this meeting. Much like an in-person GSA board meeting, we'll receive public comment during the public comment period. Feel free to use the raise hand feature if you'd like. The reactions menu located on the Zoom interface. If you're using the phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone. When you raise your hand, the chair and host will be able to see the hand is raised for a question or a comment. With that, let's get the board meeting started. Jay, can you call the roll?
Okay. Director Odom.
Present. Present.
Director Marlon Navel. Director Lopez. Director Larson.
Present.
Director Espinoza. Director Buck.
Present.
Director Alvarez. So we have some alternate. Director Al. Director Garcia. Director Jones. Director Lindo. Director Pereira. Severa. Director Ward. Director Rush. Okay, so now we also have our Secretary Tiesa.
Present.
Vice Chair Drizma. Director Alamo.
Yes.
We have six directors present.
Is that a quorum?
Yes, we have six. We should need to have five.
Perfect. Since we have a quorum, we'll begin the meeting. Are there any participants who'd like to voluntarily identify themselves at this point? Hearing none, we'll move on to our first agenda item. For all of the minutes of the regular meeting of March fourth, 2021.
Move to approve.
Is there a second to the approval of the minute?
He has a second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or changes to the minutes of March fourth of 2021? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 opposed? There are no opposition. Approval minutes passes. Public comment period. Interested persons in the audience are welcome to introduce any topic within the agency's jurisdiction. No action may be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda except where the board may briefly respond to the comments, referring them out of their staff or requests to be placed on our future agenda. Is there any public comment period at this time? Anybody see any public comment? Any hands raised?
Nothing here, Chair.
Seeing none, we're gonna proceed with our staff updates. Joint tech update, Michael.
Good evening, Chair Alamo and members of the of the Sustainability Agency. As I mentioned our last meeting, to speed along the development of the groundwater sustainability plan, a smaller ad hoc subcommittee of the Joint Technical Advisory Committee was created. The smaller group is charged with developing and vetting agenda items for the joint tack and to address issues as they arise. The ad hoc group allows the joint tack to keep its meetings narrowly focused on addressing key issues. The ad hoc group has been meeting almost weekly and has worked on a number of matters, including comments for the basin setting chapters of the GSP, a review of the climate change analysis, as well as the development of sustainable management criteria for the subsidence and the interconnected surface water sustainability indicators. So that that joint group has, that small ad hoc group has been very busy. The Joint Technical Advisory Committee has met three times since your last meeting, on the 11th and the 18th and the 25th of March. The meetings are very well attended and sometimes we get more than 30 participants. Issues discussed included applying for additional financial support services from Department of Water Resources. You'll find out more about that tonight. Reviewing the schedule and reviewing and approving the inclusion of the climate change modeling scenario analysis and its findings with the GSP. So about six or seven meetings since your last meeting a month ago and everybody's staff is working very hard to keep this plan on target and to get it approved by early next year. So with that, any questions on the joint tack update? Okay, hearing none, Chair Alamo, if it's okay with you, move on to inter basin coordination.
That'd be great. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, so we've had no official inter basin coordination meetings since your last GSA board meeting. However, we have had discussions with members of the Merced Sub Basin GSA as we work on issues related to the Merced River. And furthermore, the Delta Mendota Sub Basin has reached out to us as well as the Modesto Sub Basin representatives to discuss the development of a monitoring network on both sides of the San Joaquin River. And that's in its very early days yet, and I'll keep you updated. We haven't even met yet. We're just trying to come up with a date. But we are looking at coordinating monitoring efforts along the San Joaquin River. So with that, that ends that update. I'd be interested in any questions if you have them.
I'm not hearing any. Michael, thank you for that great update. We'll proceed with the GSP update. Debbie.
Hi, can you hear me? Thank you. Okay, let me see if I can share my screen. I have a short presentation. Give me just a sec. Oh, thank you, Herb. Let's see. If I can make it work. That's not it. Oh darn, a minute.
Joe, this is Miguel with the city of Modesto. Sorry for joining late. I just wanted to let you know I'm in.
Thank you for telling us you're in, Miguel. They will put you in the minute.
Thank you. Thank you, Miguel. I'm not. No. Darn.
Debbie, I know sometimes, sometimes when, if you have a lot of windows open, there might be a window in Zoom that says show more windows when you click share and it'll allow you to scroll. I've done that before.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm like, where in the world are they? Thank you. Okay, I think, I think. I have it. Can you see this? Brilliant. Thank you, Herb. You're a lifesaver. Let's see. Show from the beginning. There we go. Okay, so. Darn, one more thing. Let's see, does that work?
Looking good.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. So I have a few topics for for you today. One, I wanted to give you an update on what we've been working on with respect to subsidence and and the sustainable management criteria associated with that. Particularly, we've developed a recommendation for the minimum threshold and a framework for monitoring for it. And I'll talk a little bit about the climate change analysis that Mr. Cook just mentioned, as well as some schedule and budget issues that we've been working on. So, oh darn, hold on. Me and my stumbling fingers. I apologize. Okay, so. Subsidance. So just an overview a little bit before before we get into the recommendation. Because I'm not sure how much everyone understands what may be causing subsidence within the valley. People have likely heard about the subsidence south of the Turlock area. The Turlock Sub Basin hasn't had a lot of subsidence. And it hasn't been an issue for us, but it is something that we need to be aware of and to monitor for and to protect against. And so so let's talk a little bit about about what what might cause subsidence. So the valley is created based on a bunch of deposits over time. And and one of those deposits is is some clay silts and and what have you that used to be a lake bed. And and so that corcoran clay, which is kind of blue in color, is, it kind of lies between the upper aquifer and the lower aquifer within our sub basin. And and so you can see here that that the, this is the lower aquifer and this is the upper aquifer. This is a kind of a cross section of the valley. And and the corcoran clay is that dark gray that that situated kind of in between the two aquifers. And so, so what happens is that when the groundwater levels, if they were to go below essentially the the top of the corcoran clay, then the corcoran clay can collapse, in a sense. And 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 that's what creates this subsidence that we've seen elsewhere in the valley. And so this is a kind of a depiction of of that. And and so what you can see here is is that blue area is represented as the corcoran clay. And so when the 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 water levels get down below the corcoran and and it can happen in in other situations, but it's mainly the situation that I'm talking about here that that has been a problem in the valleys. When the corcoran clay collapses because the water is kind of holding all of those finer sediments and then when the water goes away, the the finer sediments don't have the structure to to maintain the current volume and so it compacts basically with with the the pressure from the upper sediment. So there hasn't been a lot, like I said, of of that issue within our sub basin. This is a map showing the valley and Turlock is is labeled there. I don't know if you can see my cursor or not. The Turlock is here and and all of the the subsidence that has occurred in the valley is really kind of south of us. Although there is some monitoring occurring in our area and so that's helpful. So so really, we're focused on avoiding subsidence. And and so the recommendation that we have is, and and that's being moved forward for the development of of the sustainable management criteria at the tack level as we're developing documents that we'll be bringing to you for your consideration. It is to, one, identify an undesirable result. So that's one thing we have to identify within the the groundwater sustainability plan. So the undesirable result would be if there were to be significant or unreasonable inelastic land subsidence when, you know, it's not able to recover. In some cases, you can have recovery. So there can be changes in the land surface as water gets pumped and then recharged. So so we're not, we're not looking at that. We're looking at at inelastic subsidence, where there would be an adverse impact or effects on on land use or reducing the viability of critical infrastructure like canals and roadways and bridges and those types of things. So that would be considered an undesirable result. And so we're trying to protect against those by establishing a minimum threshold and managing the sub basin so we don't have that undesirable result. And so the idea is to set the minimum threshold at the top of the corcoran clay to avoid, so water levels would be maintained above the corcoran clay so that we don't de-water the corcoran clay and create the issue. So so that's, that's the approach. We're developing a monitoring network and so that information will be provided as as we move through that process. And and then there's also some additional monitoring that that would supplement the groundwater level monitoring. So that would be, at this point, that would be the primary mechanism that would be using to evaluate whether or not we're complying with the sustainable management criteria. But then in addition to the water level monitoring, there's satellite imagery that's being used. That's a new technology that that could be perhaps our future monitoring network that it as we watch that and as we look at at how that that technology works. There's also some GPS locations that are being monitored by the US Bureau of Reclamation and and perhaps there could be some additional monitoring points that are used to supplement the water level measurements to verify that, yeah, that that's working. So that's, that's where we are right now with with the subsidence. And and I'd stop and and see if there are any questions before I move to the next topic.
Debbie, I don't see any questions for you. So go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. So the next topic, if I can move the screen, okay, is climate change. So Sigma requires that we evaluate climate change as a part of our groundwater sustainability plan. So if you recall, Phyllis Stanen with Todd Groundwater provided a presentation some time ago. I think it was late last year on the baseline modeling or future projected scenario that that we have done with the groundwater model. And that includes a 50-year forecast into the future. So so Sigma requires that we take that forecast and then we layer on top of that protected changes due to climate change. And then we evaluate what the what might look, what the conditions might look like under that climate climate change scenario. So as as we all know, climate change science is is evolving as we learn more and more. But there appears to be a general consensus that drier years are projected to be drier and wetter years are projected to be wetter. So the Department of Water Resources has developed a tool and and some projected change factors or adjustment factors to adjust some of the items within the the baseline scenario. So precipitation, evaporate transpiration, stream flow runoff, those types of things that are projected to change in the future under a climate change scenario. They have some adjustment factors you can use to make adjustments to those to project what might might, the future might look like under a climate change scenario. And so so that's available to us. We're not required to use it, but there's, there's some feedback. Sounds like somebody's on the road. If they could maybe put them, put themselves on mute, that would be helpful. Hello? Oh, thank you.
See, we got it.
Thank you. So so like I said, we're not required to use DWR's recommenda approach. If there's something better, but we just don't have anything better at this time. And so the approach that we've used is to use the DWR's recommendations and recognize that future GSPs could develop or utilize more locally specific information, should it be available. So so that's the approach we've taken and I have some information to kind of show you what it looks like. So this is a map of of the watershed. So the watershed's over here and then this is the sub basin. And they basically identified, you know, different pixels where you would apply different adjustment factors to adjust the precipitation to reflect what it might look like in the future. And so as you can see over on over here, in in the upper watershed, the the adjustment factor would be, for example, the minimum would be, the adjustment factor would be less than one. And so it would, in drier years, it would make the precipitation a little less than what it is now. And you could see under the max condition, it's a little more than one. And so when you multiply that by the existing precipitation, it would be a little more than what what we have right now. And so you can see that it it goes along that that general understanding about what we expect in the future where our dry years are going to be drier and wetter years would be wetter. And this kind of reflects that. So so if you move to what it results in is this, this graph shows, shows that, okay, so the climate change scenario is the dark blue and the projected baseline that you've seen before is is the lighter blue. And so it shows that in the wetter years, there's a little more precipitation and and so forth. And and the same over here, that the wetter winters are a little wetter and that there's drier summers. So so let's see. And this is yet another kind of depiction of how it impacts climate or precipitation. So another factor that they expect will change in the future due to climate change is is the ET. It's estimated that that crops and plants will utilize more water and need more water in the future. And so that's predicted here. Again, the adjustment factor is adjusted where it's a little more than one and so it's going to be an increase in in water use. And and this is reflected here as well where, and then the the colors are switched up on this one. So in this case, the light blue is the baseline and the dark blue is the climate change. And you can see that there's an addition, an additional component of of water that's needed by the crops over time due to climate change. So let's see. Sorry. I'm having technical difficulties. Let's try that. Okay. And lastly, stream flow. So this shows that stream flow will be a little, it it's basically extending the peaks. So in the wetter years, when you've got high flows, some of those are going to be a little higher and on the lower peaks as well. So it's going to be a little lower. So and the same, so this is the twolomy in the Merced and you see similar things. So the, you know, the the flows are generally kind of consistent. It's just, it's extending those peaks. So let's see. I am still having difficulty. Okay, there we go. So what does that mean? This this kind of shows how it all kind of fits together from a crop water perspective, where ag demand is going to go up a little bit. Surface water availability would go down slightly and pumping would go up to accommodate the additional demand and and the reduced surface water supply. And lastly, so in summary, I guess, what it means for the overall system is, and we talked a little bit about that, increased agriculture demand due to higher evaporate transpiration, decreased surface water supply due to earlier precipitation and snow melt and an increased groundwater pumping to meet the ag demand. On the groundwater side, it means that that there will be some additional decline potentially in groundwater storage and water levels due to increased production. And there could be, that could result in increased stream seepage due to lower groundwater levels. Again, this is a projection layered on top of the baseline. It doesn't include any additional projects and those types of things. And so what this means from an overall GSP perspective is that we would need to incorporate into the GSP some projects and actions that could be utilized to to address these changing conditions over time if we see that that this is actually, you know, occurring. So that's, that's the idea. And frankly, you know, as we update the GSP over time, additional information will be available and 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 we'll understand more as we go. But but this is the first look at what what we think climate change might need for the sub basin. So I'll stop there again and see if there's any questions that I could answer. Okay, then I'll move on. So the last thing I had for you is a a little bit on schedule and and budget. So it has taken us longer to work through some of the items that that we've been working on than initially anticipated. But we are close to, I think, having a first section of the the GSP that we can bring to the GSAs for their review and and then the public. We expect that that those first sections will be completed by the tack at the end of April, beginning of May. And so we would be bringing that to you folks in in May. At least that's, that's the current projection. And 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 with things taking a little longer, there there has been more meetings. Mr. Cook mentioned that we've had quite a few ad hoc meetings to develop recommendations to move things through and and kind of bring things back to the tack. We're scheduling additional meetings as it as needed. So it's a constantly evolving schedule. And we were developing a a listing of those meetings and and projections to be put onto the website so that it'll be available for folks so they'll understand when things will be coming back to the tack. And and then the the GSA as well. And lastly, with all of the additional meetings, there have been additional costs. We have been able to make use of the existing resources within the budget for much of it. But there have been some things that have shifted a bit, and that's why we'll be seeking approval from you to apply for the facilitation support services with Department of Water Resources. It's a program we've used in the past that could help to further move forward with the outreach. As much of the outreach budget has kind of been utilized in working through a lot of these issues at the TAC level. Also, there have, there are some unbudgeted items that we're working through. We don't have, we didn't include, I guess, in the initial scope of work and budget, the ability to utilize consulting assistance in working through responses to comments, for example. And so, that was inadvertently left out of the process. And so, we may have enough money to work through that within the existing budget. There is money in the existing budget to continue moving forward with the process. It's, at this point, there's a little bit of an unknown on how much additional meetings and back and forth there might be as we move through the rest of the project. And that's a really unknown. If things are more streamlined as we continue forward, then, you know, we may not have an issue. And, but if there are, is a need for that additional work, then there might be a need for additional funding to help finish the project. We're looking at that now, and we'll be coming back to you next month with a recommendation on what that looks like. So, that was the bad news that I had for you today.
Well, thank you, Debbie. I don't think Vito will let you increase the budget, so I think that's not bad news. So, is there any other questions for Debbie at this time? Harry Nana, let's move on to the public outreach update.
Okay, thank you, Chair Alamo and other board members. I am going to switch off of Debbie's screen and just put the agenda back up as I share this.
Please do, thank you.
I only have three items here, knowing that I'm going to talk in a minute about the application for facilitation support services. Just the first thing is that our interested parties list for our sub-basin has reached 343 people. It's steadily climbed since we started sending out emails some three years back. And so, it's almost to 350. And then, secondly, the, and I'll put it in the chat. I'll put a link in the chat as soon as, as soon as I finish. And you know, now that I think about it, it's probably best to put my video on too. As soon as I finish, stop talking, I'll put a link into the chat for this Virtual Water Leadership Institute, which has been talked about the past few years. It's a joint venture between EDF, which is the Environmental Defense Fund, RCAC, which is the Rural Communities Assistance Corporation, and then the Westerlock Sub Basin GSA. And so, we've been working together the past two years. And now, at the end of April, right now, currently, there's an application process being underwent. So, that's why I'm going to provide the link in a second. So, anybody who's interested in applying can apply. There's some criteria that are there, but we're getting the outreach out there. Our three organizations are. And that will begin formally at the end of April. And it's a 15-week free institute with the aim of informing and educating, you know, people who are passionate about water and groundwater in the sub-basin and who have an interest in learning about advocacy and leadership. And so, I'll put a link into the chat in a second for that, just so you can see what that's like, or if anyone on the call is interested in looking at that, that could be the case too. So, that's my second item. And then, the third item is we continue, from an outreach standpoint, to prepare for the public release of GSP Sections 1, 2, and 4 for public comment. And so, we've developed a couple pages on the website where people can submit comments through our website. And of course, we'll provide options for people to submit comments through traditional mail or email as well. And so, that's, those are the three brief updates that I could think of, other than the FSS funding that we're working on as far as outreach. And so, I'll stop there and see if there's any questions, and then yield the mic to Mr. Clipper if needed. Well, thank you, everybody. Back to you, Joe.
Thanks for the update. Herb, we'll go on to Michael Clipper, the budget update.
Okay, for the Westerlock account, for the period ending March 31st, we had $165,113.32 for this, for the Westerlock account. And for the basin account, for the same period, March 31st, we had $928,045.99. Any questions? Debbie kind of gave a overview of what's kind of coming up on the horizon. We will be coming back with a budget for the new fiscal year next month.
Questions for Michael? Thank you, Michael. Back to you, Herb.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I was just putting that link in the chat for people who are interested in, and I think I made a misspelling, just typing too fast. So, I'm going to share a brief. I have, I think, a five-slide presentation that I think should go pretty quick. Let me pull it up real quick. Okay. So, it was mentioned already by Debbie and Michael that we have applied in the past, and we're applying again now. We're looking to apply now. I'm going to have to do that for a second because my slide wants to automatically advance. So, I'm just going to do this, keep it on the screen that way. So, we are looking to apply again for, to the Department of Water Resources for Facilitation Support Services. And I'm just going to go through a couple of quick things and then talk a little bit about what we're asking for before I present a resolution to the board. So, you know, facilitation support services is something that DWR is doing in addition to a lot of other funding opportunities to help agencies like ours just work through a few things. And so, we're looking to do that again. They're offering, you see in the second bullet there, the types of things that they offer through such facilitation support services. And where the ones in bold are the ones in which, as you'll see in a few slides, what we're looking to get out of the facilitation. Communication engagement, planning and support, public outreach, and meeting facilitation. And there's some other things that can be done as well. So, a little bit more is another GSA, the East Terloc Sub Basin GSA. And so, we're able to apply. We can apply anytime because as long as funding is available, and we've spoken to DWR, and there is still funding available for these services. And as was mentioned earlier from Debbie, we've received, we've applied for and received this funding twice before under Sigma as a sub-basin, one of which was, you may remember, I'm trying to remember if it was me coming before the board or somebody else back in September of 2017. But we came before you to get some, to apply for this funding, and that funding made its way into, among other things, workable, comprehensive communications plan for the sub-basin. And then, prior to the formation of this body back in early 2017, funding was acquired for workshops, for GSA formation help, and also for, to advance the need for a memorandum of agreement to form the GSA. Of course, we ended up using the JPA as a mechanism, but that was all from the first round, very first round of FSS funding. So, what are we asking for in this specific instance? Our scope of work's more detailed than this, but I put the things that we're asking for on this slide. We're asking for three tasks, essentially, meeting facilitation, a GSP adoption toolkit, and then some recorded presentations. And I'm just going to briefly mention that the facilitation is for the meetings that are listed there. And a lot of them kind of come in the result of what Debbie mentioned about funding kind of being taken from the outreach budget in order to address a lot of coordination issues and a lot of, you know, GSP facilitation discussions that have been taking place. And so, we can still, I don't want to make anybody nervous. We could still do all these things here in meeting facilitation. It just means that more would fall on the shoulders of myself and others in the ad hoc committee and the other members of the West and East Terloc Sub Basin GSAs. But we're asking for, from the Department of Water Resources, for facilitation for these meetings that are listed here in the top five bullets. And so, I can go into detail on those later if needed. Also, we're looking to have a GSP adoption toolkit, which would be basically a suite of materials once we get closer to adopting the GSP. That could be sent out to member agencies to tell their customers, GSA member agencies to inform their customers, and also for how to get things before their respective boards and councils, and just informational items, like a press packet. I guess, a lot of people referred to it in the past as, but we're calling it a toolkit. And so, we're looking to do something like that. It also would be able to be going to other stakeholders in the sub-basin so they can inform their interested parties as well. And then, lastly, we're looking to have some recorded presentations. DWR doesn't like the use of the term "video" because that implies a higher edited form of presentation. But they're looking, we're looking to work with them to have three presentations that would be in a non-public setting so they could, we could have a presentation given by our technical team or our technical consultant, or somebody who is talking about the value of groundwater to domestic water. If we're looking to the cities, we could do anything, and it would be facilitated through this funding. And then, we would, we would put it up on our YouTube channel and other social media sites. And so, that would be helpful for that. And so, that in general are the three areas in which we're going to be asking for funding from the department. And I have two more slides here, just some additional notes. You know, the GSA won't be taking on any additional debt. You know, this is funding that would come from the state, and it has few or zero strings attached to it from the past few times we've experienced using this funding. DWR doesn't do the work itself. It just works with their subcontractor. They subcontract with a facilitation firm to work with us. We've been in contact with DWR on our submittal, and they've been helping us through some of the things that we might ask for and some of the things that we probably shouldn't ask for because it's not included in their, in their scope of their services. And so, our GSA would be the applicant on behalf of the entire sub-basin, which is consistent with what we've done in the past. And, you know, the East Terloc GSA is familiar with what we're doing and have been involved. And then, not all of the things we're asking for would be approved, could be approved. Maybe they are, maybe they aren't. So, we may have to tell them what's a priority to us. But they, DWR has been real consistent, letting us know that some things may be approved and some things may not. So, just to be prepared for that. And once it's approved, or if the application is approved, you know, the TAC continues to work with DWR and the contracting agency. I believe they've been using STANTEC, which is well-known in the state. And so, we would be working with them most likely if that's the case. And then, the process takes a little bit of time. You know, you note that on the previous slide, I think the first thing, and it's mentioned in our scope of work too, the first timing, when we'd be looking to kind of use some of the funding would be kind of the July-August timeframe. So, it takes a little bit of time to secure it from the state and to work with them and have kickoff meetings with the contractor and all of that. And so, those are just a few side notes to kind of help aid your decision. And my last slide is really just the resolution itself, which I also have if you need to see it. But basically, just authorize, we're coming before you, like we did in September of 2017, for the board to authorize the chair of the sub-basin's technical advisory committee to submit an application to the Department of Water Resources for Facilitation Support Services for funding of any or all, hopefully up to all of the things we mentioned on Slide number four previously. And so, I will, I will stop there and see if there are any questions or if anybody wants to advance our recommendation by way of resolution.
So, any questions for Herb, or what's the pleasure of the board? Did everyone go to sleep?
Would anybody like to move this forward?
I'd like to move it. Yes.
Vito, Kate, so thank you, Vito. Is there a second to this resolution?
Oh, second.
Larson, second, yeah.
Well, we got a, probably moved and seconded twice, so we're doing great. Is there any further discussion on this? If not, we'll proceed with Fay for a roll call on this.
Sorry, Joe, who was the second?
Who was the second again?
Director Buck did second.
Thank you, Director Buck.
Okay.
Could you call, if there's no more discussion or any other questions, can you call the role on this resolution, Fay?
Okay, Director Severa. Yeah, A or N?
Yeah.
Director Odom? Director Odom? Yeah, unmute, please. Yes or no?
Director Odom, are you still with us there? You going to give us a thumbs up, thumbs down, unmute?
Director Larson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Drizma?
Vice Chair Drizma had to step off, Fay.
Oh, okay. Secretary Kieza?
Yes.
Director Buck?
Yes.
Director Alvarez?
Yes.
Chair Alamo?
Yes.
Only one undecided because you didn't answer.
Do we have enough to carry that forward, Fay?
We do, yes, we do it, pass.
Thank you, resolution passes.
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion during the closed session. We have one item in closed session. Conference with legal counsel, anticipate the litigation. Would anybody like to move that closed session?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Director Buck. Is there a second?
Second, Kieza.
Thank you, Director Kieza. With that, is there any further discussion or comment on moving to closed session? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, Chair Alamo, it looks like, uh, it looks like everyone's coming back. Um, and I have started recording, so I leave it to you.
Uh, thank you, thank you. Uh, I'd like to report out, there's no items to report out of closed session. Proceeding on to agenda item I, comments from the board. Is there any comments from the board at this time? Well, that wasn't too difficult or too painful tonight. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I now declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you for your participation.